Welcome everyone to the November 10 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and at home. We have two really interesting topics coming up this evening. First up is a transportation funding update. City Manager?
Thank you Mayor, and I'll just turn it over to Kurt to get us going.
Do you like that call that really interesting? No?[20.14][20.14](Laughter)
Yeah, interesting. Okay, well, it's always a pleasure to visit with you about transportation funding. And as I put some notes together for this, which I intend to serve as kind of a 15-year history of where we've been with transportation funding, together with, you know, what's next on the horizon. You know, I lost count of how many times we've talked about this topic, and I thought, you know, Betty has sat through all of these, which may number close to 40 by now, and some of the rest of you are not too far behind. But I think it kind of started out as a really a doom and gloom story, and, you know, today it's kind of somewhere between good news and bad news, and where are we? But, you know, I guess in fairness, the story keeps getting a little better. But part of the message tonight is that we're not done, and that we need to kind of stay the course of where we're at. So, so as not to disappoint anyone...
There it is.
You've all become accustomed to the analogy of the three-legged stool, and we're going to show it to you several versions of that tonight, that kind of demonstrate the applicability of the three-legged stool to this conversation. So this one is one that you haven't necessarily seen before, but it gets to some of the goals that were established from the get-go on talking about transportation funding, that as we started looking for packages and diverse sets of funding solutions through what became a fairly significant problem, there's always been a goal to have solutions that are locally-controlled, sustainable, and fair and equitable. We spent quite a bit of time over the years waiting for the state or federal governments to resolve the problem, and that never really happened. So we've always gravitated back towards the locally-controlled option or options. On the sustainability side, and not just in terms of the triple bottom line that you all know has been worked into a lot of the work that we've done in recent years, but we've tried to avoid the one-time fixed solution, recognizing that it's an ongoing issue, and we have to look for options that are good for the longer term. And fair and equitable is a topic that this group has talked about at great length with every option that's been considered, and ultimately, we've concluded that really one-size-doesn't-fit-all, which kind of brings us to the point of having multiple funding sources, multiple types of funding to deal with transportation. This is a more familiar version of the stool that we used to kind of work into the discussion of how the transportation funding system works. We have an enhanced capacity on the right leg of the stool there that's really building something for the first time. The O&M leg that's on the left side is the work that we do to take care of the new system once it's in place. In the middle is the capital preservation leg that recognizes that periodically, we just simply need to do some major rehab or reconstruction of parts of the network. And this is yet another view of the three-legged stool, minus the stool and the legs, but it demonstrates what's done there needs to those categories. On the new project side, on the far right, the dollar amount varies by year. But in general, this is work that's done to establish new roads that don't exist, or to build more material networks, or to add capacity to the network. Money comes from intergovernmental grants or revenue sharing, comes from transportation SDCs, it comes from the privately engineered public improvement process, where the vast majority of residential streets are born and raised. And the city projects on the capital side are always identified through the Capital Improvements Plan. The operations maintenance leg on the far left of this slide is currently about an $11 million annual service that's delivered through our maintenance division, primarily funded via the State Highway Trust Fund, together with lesser amounts from permits that we issue and a variety of fees that are collected. The work done in this category is all of the not-too-sexy work that goes on with transportation systems, but it's signs and markings, it's pothole repairs, it's crack sealing, transportation and traffic planning, our street light system, our traffic signal maintenance, and all of those services that need to become part and parcel of having a transportation system that functions. So in the middle is the list of services and revenues that are derived from the capital preservation side of the division. This slide reflects kind of a snapshot in time, its outcomes for FY14. And as you can see, the capital preservation amount up here is a little over $13 million for FY14. We've been plus or minus that for a few years. Funding for this leg comes from the road bond measure, comes from our local gas tax, it comes from the reimbursement portion of SDCs, and we periodically do receive some federal and state grants. I would say, by and large, over the years, this is the leg that we've talked about the most during these sessions. The convention on this slide is that you see a solid line between the new construction and the capital preservation, reflecting that, in general, the funding for this category is not available for this category and vice versa. You see kind of a dashed line separating these two. In general, the funding on capital preservation is not available for operations and maintenance, but there are some O&M dollars that are available for capital preservation. So simply a convention to reflect the way the funding flows there. And by the way, you might recall that the first time you saw this leg, the number was far less than $13 million in the middle, and so we've actually gone from zero to there in the last 15 years. This slide is kind of a graphic representation of the journey that we've been on that takes us back to the year 2000, you know, slightly before I arrived. As we approached the late 90s, we found ourselves unable to, in excess of 20 years, increased in 1992, and then not again until just a few years ago. Similarly, the vehicle registration fee had remained flat for a good period of time until about 2011. So in 2001, as you look at the slide, the Budget Committee began wrestling with the issue of capital preservation of the transportation network. At that time, we had determined that the backlog was at about $67 million and no hope in sight. The council established a subcommittee comprised of the citizen members of the Budget Committee at that time to go forth and come back with solutions to the problem. In 2001, that committee did in fact provide a report of their findings, and they looked at, I suppose, almost every imaginable source of transportation funding, came back with a recommendation that the city council should adopt a local gas tax and a transportation utility fee based upon a TRIP generation convention. By 2003, we had gotten to the point where the council actually adopted a 3 cent per gallon local gas tax, and later that year passed and subsequently rescinded a transportation utility fee. But it was a start. The 3 cents per gallon gas tax became a start, and so you begin to see a little rise on the curve back in 2003. Based in part on the success of the 3 cent per gallon tax, and very little public consternation over paying the 3 cents per gallon at a time when prices at the pump were rocketing past $2, then $2.50, and approaching $3. In 2005, the council agreed to increase the local gas tax to 5 cents per gallon. That would be the next spike on the chart that you see about that point in time. We found that we were making some amount of progress. We were finally getting some potholes patched, we were getting some roadwork done that was long overdue, but at the same time, the backlog was continuing to grow. So we were literally chasing the wrinkle in the blanket, and found that the backlog of deferred maintenance while we were doing this good work had grown to in excess of $180 million. So in 2007, a council subcommittee was established to take another fresh look at transportation funding. And although that committee was set almost eight years ago now, Chris and Alan were part of that, it came back with a report in May of 2007 that may be fresh in some of your minds yet, but had identified by 2007 that the new annual funding target was actually $18 million if we wanted to get rid of the backlog at some point, and that there were a series of recommendations that were brought back to the whole council for consideration. Those included increasing the gas tax again to 8 cents per gallon, that a transportation utility fee based upon a parking metric be pursued, that we implement a street lighting fee, that we implement a solid waste fee, and that we pursue a general obligation bond measure. Also as a part of these recommendations was a directive to the city manager to encourage Lane County to pursue a vehicle registration fee on a county-wide basis. As we got to 2008 then, the voters did in fact approve a $35.9 million bond measure that came directly from the subcommittee's recommendation that was put in place very successfully, and then renewed again at $43 million in 2012. So all of that collectively brings us to the point today where we have ongoing funding, for now, about $12 to $13 million per year. We'll talk a little bit about what that curve looks like beyond that in just a minute. But throughout this process, we've drawn the backlog down to somewhere below $100 million. So progress has been made, significant problem means. So looking at this chart, I think one of the key takeaways is that at our current funding level, $18 million is the target identified by the council subcommittee in 2007. As we sit today, we are somewhere on the order of $5 to $6 million below that seven-year-old So we put this slide in that hopefully represents for all of you the risk of coasting from where we are, or kind of the do-nothing approach from this day forward. If we don't do anything else, if we call it good today, then we would see our expenditures staying at that $12 to $13 million level for about the next three years. But when the bond measure expires, we would drop back down to the pre-bond measure levels. Over here on the right side, estimated at about $3 million per year. That said, our preliminary thinking is that we would bring back a recommendation to renew the bond measure in about two years from now, so that we see some continuity with that. But even with that, we still remain below the line that would ever allow us to get rid of the backlog. So additional funding coming in will be a necessity if we want to go to zero on the backlog at some point. So the final part of this discussion then is just that, I think you're all aware that the Lane County Board of Commissioners is talking about the prospect of referring a vehicle registration fee measure to the ballot in November. Tonight, I just wanted to share a few basics about vehicle registration fees and let you know where we stand in our conversations with Lane County. Lane County would not be looking at a measure like this absent their own road fund falling into disarray with the discontinuance of historic funding levels from secure rural schools. Their determination to look at a vehicle registration fee came through a process nearly as rigorous as our own council subcommittees looking at options, and it's the proposal that the county's Roads Advisory Committee has arrived at, and which the staff is recommending to the board. Vehicle registration fees under the state statute can only be implemented by counties, not by cities. That's no change. It has always been that way. The current annual fee that we all pay for our passenger vehicles is $43 per year. The maximum increase allowed under the statute would be a doubling of that, or an additional $43 per year. The money generated through this is constitutionally limited through the Highway Trust Fund, just like our road fund is, limited to road purposes. And revenues generated by the county through a county vehicle registration fee are to be shared at the 40% level with Lane County cities. So at this point, as of last week, the Lane County staff has visited with the board and suggested an annual fee of $35. The staff has been sent forth to visit with the 12 Lane County cities to gauge their interest and to solicit the support for sending such a measure ahead. On the 16th of December, the board will then take input that they receive under advisement, and subsequently decide whether to send a measure to the May ballot. So the next steps for our group would be that on the 24th of November, we would be bringing back an opportunity for you to weigh in on the board's action. That might be in the form of resolution of support, it might be sending a letter of support, it might be looking at a draft ordinance that the county has prepared and weighing in on that. I don't want to sound overly presumptuous, I'm only suggesting that you would support that based upon having historically suggested that if only we did that, we would. Certainly doesn't presuppose that you couldn't change your minds as this just comes in, but on the 24th of November, we will have the opportunity for you to take that particular Final slide we'll give you here is our mission statement of our Public Works Department. We'll take every opportunity to get that out in front of you, but I think it goes without saying that the investment that we have all collectively made in the transportation infrastructure network in Eugene in the last 14 years has made lives better in Eugene. Look forward to continuing that process, hope we can get over the hump at some point, but unless you'll keep hearing these presentations until we can declare this complete. And I certainly don't mind coming and visiting about it, and glad that we've made the progress that we have, but we still do have work to do. There's no action requested tonight. I would note that Lane County Public Works has some staff here. Yeah, Bill Morgan and Marsha Miller are in the audience if there were specific questions about the county's action, but otherwise, we'll take any questions you might have.
The question I would ask, is there any discussion about the vehicle registration fee being graduated, or having anything to do with people's income or ability to pay?
Yeah, I don't believe so. Sure.
Hi, thank you. Marsha Miller, Lane County Public Works. Currently, the state does not allow that. They only allow the fee that they charge now, which is basically a flat fee.
For that.
Sure.
Other questions?
Yes.
Thank you very much for the report. I know, having been on the subcommittee before, we were really kind of in a difficult position when we did this, because we were facing $170, $180 million backlog. Not only that, but we were also looking at not having the money just to pay for general yearly maintenance, to keep more things off of the list. And so I think some of the options were taken up, the bond measure being the primary one. And some of the other ones, we didn't really follow up on because of, I think, in many respects, your ability to find a way to pay for O&M within the budget you had. And it took a little bit of the pressure off us, and I think we're very appreciative of the fact you were able to do that. But the message I'm hearing is, even with all of those efficiencies, and all of those ways in which you have really accomplished a lot, and people can just drive around this city and see how much we have accomplished with the bond measure, but also with the really smart things that you have done within Public Works, particularly around O&M and other kinds of things, that it's easy to lull us into a sense of complacency, that, oh, everything's okay. But just when things are really going well is probably when you need to pay even more attention, because it would be very easy to fall off and start declining again as your charge shows. So I think we really need to be thoughtful about, if we're going to renew the bond, I think that's great, but we do need to talk about what those additional options are, what are those additional things we can look at. And so I'm very supportive, I was supportive when Alan and I were on the committee back then, of the notion of a registration fee, because it is absolutely at the nexus of cars and street use. And so I think it really would be good to pursue that option, and whatever we can do to help you with that, or help the board with that, I think would be in all of our best interests, because it's all of our roads, and we all use them.
I've got Claire and Mike in the queue. Claire?
Thanks, thanks for the presentation Kurt. And you gave me my own personal presentation on transportation funding when I was a new member of the Budget Committee, that really helped me kind of grasp the situation we were in, so I just want to thank you for that. And I really want to appreciate the work of the council subcommittee and the voters for passing the bond, and then for Kurt's department for really making such great use of both bond measures. As Chris has pointed out, we can really see the results in the community. But we don't want to take it for granted that we're going to be able to do that again. But looking at the chart of the level of what that is a goal, and then where we're kind of at with the current bond, we're just hovering below $14 million. With the vehicle registration fee and our AIS, you said at the maximum amount, we might see $3 million. At the proposed amount, do you have an estimate of what we might see if it was passed as...
Yeah, and all these are estimates, of course, but at the $35 figure that the staff has recommended to the board, and Ron figures that's 80% of the maximum, so somewhere in the $2 to $2.4 million or so.
So in theory, if we as a body decided we wanted to go out for a bond measure, and the county was successful in having voters pass this vehicle registration fee, we could be seeing us closer to $14,000, maybe close to $15,000, so not so shy of our goal of 18. Great, thank you. Mike?
Thank you Mayor, I appreciate the presentation. I'm not sure where I am on the county's proposal until we hear some more, and I think about it a little bit more, but it sounds like a reasonable idea. Kurt, I appreciate the way you have made this presentation, again, to so many of us so many times. It's good to have this present in mind, but it's also good to keep us from the place of years ago of looking at that backlog and going, golly, that's a mighty big hill, what do we do about that? I think we've done a good job in the last several years of making great strides on that, and getting ourselves in a better position. I appreciated the graph of showing us, hey, a couple of years from now, we're going to have to have that conversation again, or we're going to drop down pretty considerably. There are a couple of other challenges that I would love for us to have more conversation about in the future, because I don't know how to think about it appropriately from your perspective, so we can begin to come up with answers. But I see us with one, something I've mentioned a couple of times over the years, a comprehensive plan for our unimproved road network, those roads that aren't up to city standards. I think we're in a place where the more Eugene grows, the more we're going to have that issue, especially in the River Road and Santa Clara area, come to our table, and we need to be well-prepared for it. These are farther on down the road sort of issues, but I look forward to that. Another is this, we talk about two of the legs of the stool when it comes to funding. We don't have a lot of conversations here, strategic conversations about capacity funding. And I think we're going to find ourselves with a real desire for enhanced capacity as time goes on, for a variety of reasons. I think when you look at what Springfield experienced between roughly 2000 and 2010, with about $1 billion of new investment in their community, a lot of that can be tied to the investments that they made in road capacity in their community, and a lot from what the county did to help them along that way as well. I think when we're talking about issues around economic development, I think they're fundamentally tied, and we have to have those longer-term capacity conversations. Number two, around envision Eugene and what the next step will be, we're going to have another PSU study about population projections within the next couple of years. And as we talk about all the time, I will not be surprised at all to see that 20-year window forecast come back to be Eugene will likely grow 50,000 to 60,000 people in that 20-year window. And I would say we already have, with many of our major roads, a capacity issue. When we get to that place and have to plan for that future, I'd like us to have more capacity conversations before we get there. Thank you.
Any else have any comments, questions? Yes.
Yeah, great presentation Kurt, good information. You know, the road levy, it's actually a levy out of bond, right? It really knocked down our backlog from $170 million down to what is now about $100 million, which is, and thanks to the voters for that, that's been very significant. And I remember, things were so bad, our campaign was, "Drive around." And that won the day. And we made really good strides, but we're still not close to that need. I'm struggling to remember how we set that 18 million. I remember it was kind of a compromise between how fast we wanted the backlog to come down, and what was really doable, and so that, and we set the 18 million back in that 2007 timeframe.
Yeah, without going into a lot of detail about the work of the committee, it was really a look at best information we had as to the backlog at the time, the cost of doing the types of repairs that we were talking about doing, the amount necessary for O&M. And the $18 million figure, I believe, was just the amount that needed to be in place to hope that you would halt the increase in the backlog and start to bring it down over time. I think there was a higher number that seemed to be out of reach that would establish at a time certain when you would be rid of the backlog. But the 18 million was kind of the middle ground, excuse me, taking into account all of the primary, the technical details and the cost of doing the work to stop the growth and to start bringing it down over time.
Yeah, I remember the committee that Chris and I were on with Jennifer and Bonnie back in 2007, we looked at a lot of ideas. The ones that I heavily favored are the ones that had a nexus between use of the roads and the fee. And it was kind of a compromise that we ended up with, the property tax levy, because that really has no nexus to how much you use the fee. A person who has a $750,000 house versus a person who has a $150,000 house, they could use exactly the same road, but pay wildly different amounts. So it wasn't really this nexus between the ones that, between the fee and how it's collected, and how much you use the roads. That's why I really heavily favored the transportation system fee, very complicated and hard to get through. We haven't done much with that, and probably won't. We also put forward the garbage hauler fee. That one was directly related to damage caught in the street, $1 per household, but that didn't, haven't gone anywhere. And then we also recommended this vehicle registration fee, but we couldn't do anything about it, because that had to be done at the county level. So another thing that we added in there that we should bear in mind, that we thought about but couldn't do at the time, and I believe was a rental car fee at the airport. We couldn't do that, we were prohibited to do that, because it wasn't within the city. And when we end up annexing the airport, then that rental car facility will actually be within the city, and we would have the authority to actually put a fee on for those folks that are using rental cars in our local area to help pay for the roads as well. So that's something to bear in mind later. I was supportive of the... be within the city, and we would have the authority to actually put a fee on for those folks that are using rental cars in our local area to help pay for the roads as well. So that's something to bear in mind later. I was supportive of the vehicle registration fee when we recommended, because it did have that nexus, so I'm interested in hearing more about that and where we're going with it.
So I always hate to have a conversation about what we've been through without pointing out that the bad news is the good news. We were in a bad recession, but we got more road out of the recession. So that's one little bit of good news out of a very rough time. Is there any slowing down of the growth of the backlog? I mean, I don't mean what's, I mean, as it builds up again. Is there some kind of nexus between how it was building up really fast before, and the way it's building up now?
Yeah, so I think to paraphrase your question, is the reduction in the backlog going down as quickly as it was going up before we started?
That's what I tried to say.
That's the question. It's probably going down a bit slower than the incline it was on, based upon the inventory of streets that need to be reconstructed. So a large part of the big number was streets that just simply needed to be rebuilt. And so as we make decisions, and as we collaborated on what are the projects that go in the bond measure, we acknowledged that we weren't, we were going to have to do some reconstruction projects as a part of that, and as a result, we defer, to a degree, the optimal point in time on doing some other work. But, you know, that said, the curve is downward. We run a real steep curve, just because we frankly waited too long before the first step, and a lot of sections of our roadway network that were at risk simply fell off into the bad category, and so we've been trying to catch up on that the last seven or eight years in particular. So, yeah, I think we're gaining on it, but not as quickly as it went up.
I think the most interesting thing about this road repair is, it really has a on-the-ground effect on everybody. Everybody cares about it, and I don't know how many times Betty has said that she hears more about that than anything else, because people really feel it in every neighborhood, and we certainly heard a lot of complaints before.
Literally.
Yeah, that's right. Yes, and their cars. Right. So thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate it, and we have to have a lot more discussions, but I think we're looking forward to the one on November 24th. Thank you.
So Mayor, just not directly related to that, but it's a similar conversation that we were continuing a couple of weeks ago around parks and rec facilities, where at sort of that curve where the, as Kurt was mentioning, you get to a certain point where they deteriorate faster than they were kind of the year before, and so you don't want to get to that point if at all possible. And so that's, it's kind of the same kind of an infrastructure conversation that we'll have ongoing with the parks and facilities kinds of things as well.
Bringing that up. All right. Our next item is our regional food strategy. Thank you, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are here to talk about regional food strategy at the request of Council from June of 2014. We have invited tonight our partners from Lane County, Glenda Polling and Sarah Case, who's busy giving goodies. I wish I thought of that a couple of years ago. So Glenda and Sarah are going to provide an overview of many of the programs that Lane County has taken the lead on around food strategy, and many of which we are partnering with them on. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Glenda.
Okay. Mayor Piercy, councilors, thank you very much for inviting us to this work session this evening. One thing you'll learn about the economic development team from Lane County is that we love food. And we're sharing a little bit with you right now. My name is Glenda Polling. I'm the manager of Lane County's Community and Economic Development Department. And, I'm sorry, it's not a department, it's a division, but department seems to roll off the tongue a little bit better. So this evening, I know you have a lot of handouts now in front of you, and before I turn this presentation over to Sarah, I want to talk to you a little bit about the definition of terms that we use in economic development here in Lane County. If you put a bunch of people in the room and ask them all the question, what does economic development mean, they're all going to give you a different answer, and none of them are wrong, probably. And so I want to, in your packets, you have a list of our definitions, excuse me, but I want to just read them for the viewing audience, so they understand what it is that we mean when we're talking about these things tonight. Economic development: An ongoing effort to improve the economic well-being of a community through initiatives that entail tax-based enhancement, job creation, job retention, and quality of life. Common programs that are used in economic development efforts include business retention and expansion, and business recruitment. Traded sector: Manufacturing and other non-retail industries in which member firms sell their goods or services into markets for which national or international competition exists. Import substitution: A strategy where a locality substitutes externally-produced goods and services with locally-produced ones. And there's a note here, and it is essential that both a traded sector export tactic and an import substitution tactic are used in a comprehensive economic development strategy. This allows for the utilization of local goods and services, which is the import substitution, while also expanding the tax base and growing the local economy with new wealth. And that's the traded sector export. Food security: Access by all people at all times to enough food for an active, healthy life. And food security easily can be identified as a tactic in an import substitution strategy. Cluster: Groups of interconnected firms, suppliers, related industries, and specialized institutions that arise in particular locations. Food policy council: Typically comprised of a local stakeholders and sanctioned through government action, primary goal of most food policy councils is to examine the operation of a local food system and provide ideas and recommendations for improvement through public policy change. Food hub: Support the comprehensive localized food systems within a region. Offer support services to small businesses and the food industry. Often offer wholesale activities which serve industry more than individual consumers. Public market: A permanent destination where local and regional food producers, artisans, and businesses interact directly with consumers. Regional food system: Also called local food systems or community food systems. It's a food system in which food production, processing, distribution, and consumption are integrated to enhance the environmental, economic, social, and nutritional health of a particular place. Regional food consortium: A group of public, nonprofit, and private entities that have joined together to further the development of the Lane County food and beverage industry. Team Oregon food processing: A statewide economic development initiative that supports and promotes Oregon's food industry. And that is the perfect segue into Sarah's presentation. Sarah Case works, of course, as you all know, in economic development at Lane County, but what you may not know is that she also leads the state in the Team Oregon food processing. She's an expert in this industry. She gets called on quite often to give presentations around the state, and we're really quite proud of her. And I know she's happy to talk about food tonight, because she said, "I don't think 30 minutes is long enough for me to talk." So I'd like to turn this over to Sarah.
Thank you. Mayor Piercy and councilors, thank you for inviting us here today to speak with you a little bit about the work that Lane County has been doing around the food and beverage processing industry here locally, but also, as Glenda mentioned, statewide. This has been a five-year process for us, and so you might understand why 30 minutes is maybe a little difficult to explain what we've been doing in the last five years, but we'll do our best to do that. So I think most of you have probably heard of a few of these documents that I'm going to very, very briefly, in fact, just mention to you. So Lane County started out about five years ago now, in 2010, really taking a deep dive on the food processing industry here locally. We certainly did that in partnership with the City of Eugene and other regional partners. The first document, if you will, that came from our foundational efforts here was the Lane County Local Food Market Analysis. And I'm fairly certain most of you have probably heard of that and had instant high-level overview. It is in your packet. I know you received it with your agenda summary. We've also provided it to you in the packet, the executive summary. I opted to not provide you the 187 pages that the full document entails, but it was really the foundational report that allowed us to say, you know, for an economic development strategy, food processing is a great industry for us to really target. Next came the food industry analysis, which is something that Lane County took on in partnership, again, with the City of Eugene and Lane Workforce Partnership. And the point of the food industry analysis was really to connect with the business community. And first of all, say, hey, do you want our help? And if you do, how can we help? The answer was, yes, we want your help, and you can help in these ways, primarily around marketing and branding of the industry. But there were certainly a number of items that were not surprising to us, circling around infrastructure development, workforce development, and things that we typically do see. That industry analysis really catapulted into the regional food consortium that Glenda mentioned, which is really a consortium of groups, public, nonprofit, and private industry folks, who have gathered together and recognize that this is an important industry, and we want to continue to assist this industry in ways that are meaningful and helpful as it relates to economic development. The primary function of that group at this point, which I'm pleased to report, has really been taken over by the nonprofit and private industry folks that are at the table, which is exactly what we like to see. But the primary function there at this point is the marketing and branding of the industry locally, and what that might look like. So they're working on that quite diligently. Most recently, the City of Eugene and Lane County partnered to develop a food hub market analysis in conjunction with the community planning workshop over at the University of Oregon. And I can't reiterate enough, this is a first step at understanding what exactly is a food hub, what exactly is a public market, and do those concepts perhaps fit here in Lane County? It's a great report. I believe you'll, if you haven't seen it already, you will soon. But it is just a first step, and there is going to have to be a lot more analysis to see if that is really an option for this area. As I mentioned, these are all foundational documents. It's been very important to have this information to inform our strategy as we move forward and continue to move forward. And I would like to reiterate that City of Eugene's staff have been integral players in all of these activities and great partners for our staff to work with. But what has Lane County been up to? I first want to really reiterate that the BCC, the Board of County Commissioners, has been incredibly supportive of this industry from the beginning. And they've done so not just by talking about it and saying, yeah, we support this industry, but they've really kind of put their money where their mouth is. And over the last five years have, through our grant program, granted out $755,000 to food and beverage-related businesses. Many of those businesses are represented here on your screen. Like I said, this is through our Video Lottery Strategic Investment Program. It's seeded through Video Lottery proceeds that are earmarked specifically for economic development, job creation, retention, and workforce development. These awards have been since 2010, and as you can see, the return on investment has been quite significant. So we're talking about 300-plus jobs. That's a return on investment of one job per $2,500. That is significant. The government, when they're issuing job creation grants and that sort of thing, anticipates a return on investment at about $35,000 per job. So we're doing quite well. But even probably more significant in my mind is the amount of money that this has leveraged in private investment for our community. We're talking more than $30 million of private industry investment into their businesses to grow and expand and put people to work, and that's significant. But that's not all we're doing at Lane County. So the board has been incredibly supportive through their grant program and through allowing staff to certainly put this in our work plan. And when we put this in our work plan, we decided that we really needed to participate in an initiative, a statewide initiative called Team Oregon Food Processing. So as Glenda mentioned, statewide initiative focused on the food processing industry that focuses on both recruitment and retention and expansion. This was born out of the Oregon Economic Development Association, and for those of you who don't know that association, it's essentially the trade association for folks like Glenda and I, economic development practitioners in both the public and private realm. The OITA board sent out a survey in 2010, 2011, and asked their member organizations, what industries are of most interest to you? And at that time, food processing was the number-one industry of importance to local economic development practitioners across the state. So Team Oregon, the concept of Team Oregon was really born out of that survey, and with OITA's leadership, members started to formulate this concept. And I'm very pleased to report that Lane County has been at that table from the beginning, not only in just a membership role, but as a leadership role, most recently over the last two years. So the team has actually, two years ago, asked me as a team member to lead Team Oregon Food Processing, and so Lane County not only is a member, but we are serving in a leadership capacity there. But who is Team Oregon Food Processing, you might be wondering? So we're more than 20 members strong. Actually, I think we're about 25 members now. We've recruited a few new ones this year. We're generally local economic development practitioners from across the state. But I would be remiss if I didn't explain a few of our statewide partners. Certainly, the Oregon Economic Development Association is a major contributor to this effort, both in terms of financing, but also in terms of administration and that sort of thing. Business Oregon is, this wouldn't happen without Business Oregon. Certainly, they're our statewide economic development agency. They contribute financially in a significant amount, but they also do a lot of our staff work as an in-kind service. So all of our marketing materials, some educational opportunities are all centered around Business Oregon's time and generosity. Certainly, the Department of Ag. In this particular industry, it's very important to have the Department of Ag at the table. They are the technical experts when it comes to food processing and all of the intricacies that go along with that industry. So the Department of Ag has come on board and are very excited about the initiatives that we have in place. So as you might have been able to infer, this is a pay-to-play membership organization, initiative, I wouldn't call it an organization, but it's a very nominal fee. It's $1,000. And really what it does is allow local jurisdictions that couldn't afford to go it alone, so to speak, in this realm, to leverage the resources of statewide partners to create a strong and very well-respected statewide program that benefits all. And I would be remiss also to not mention protocol here as it relates to the team. This is a statewide initiative, so even as somebody that represents Lane County, when I am representing Team Oregon Food Processing, I am representing the state of Oregon first. And that's to benefit everybody. Yes, I can sell Lane Yes, I can sell Lane County much better than I can sell Southern Oregon or Eastern Oregon, but this is a statewide initiative and the goal is to promote the level that Oregon plays in this industry, and that helps all of us. So what do we do? What does Team Oregon do? We are, as I mentioned, a comprehensive economic development strategy that does both business recruitment and business retention and expansion. When we first started in 2011, we thought this was going to be primarily a recruitment initiative. We were going to go to trade shows, we were going to talk up the state of Oregon and all the benefits that we have for the food processing industry, and we were going to attract businesses to Oregon. And we still do that. But what we found out very quickly is that this is much more a retention and expansion play than it is a recruitment play. We still pay attention to recruitment, we still do those activities, and we're continually evolving in those activities. But we are focusing much more of our time on the recruitment and extension play that we have as Team Oregon. So how do we do that? Well, we attend trade shows. And one of the largest trade shows in the states, actually, is the Natural Products Expo West. And that's in Anaheim every March. We are there with a booth. And this last year, we decided that we were going to enlarge the size of our booth, get a double booth, and invite local Oregon emerging companies to share the booth with us. So we call it our booth share program. It's very innovative. So six Oregon companies who couldn't otherwise be at this trade show because it's quite costly are now able to come for a very nominal fee and share space in our booth. They have their own two-foot space. It doesn't sound like much, but it gets the job done. And they're able to connect with buyers and other very critical people that they need to connect with in order to promote their business from all over the world. And so as an example, you'll see Red Duck ketchup in the photo there. That was our local company, and we were very proud to and happy to be able to help them get there this past year. They had an incredibly successful show. So not only did they meet with the buyers that they needed to meet with, but then they closed the deals, which is the hardest part. Because you can meet with all the people that you want to meet with, but if you don't close the deal, then it, you know, it doesn't help your bottom line. So I'm happy to report, I just actually spoke with Karen over there last week, as a result of being able to go to this trade show, they were able to get distribution across the western part of the United States and just, I believe it was just last week, they are now in Alaska, as a result of this trade show. So we're doing incredibly important things for our local businesses as being part of Team Oregon Food Processing, and we're very happy to report that. What I would also mention is that as part of this particular trade show, we also host an Oregon reception at the McCormick &amp; Schmicks, just down the block from the Anaheim Convention Center. And because McCormick &amp; Schmicks is an Oregon restaurant, they're very good to work with us to promote our Oregon products and our Oregon companies. So we're able to not only have these six companies in our booth for the trade show, but then we're also, we're able to bring another 20 or so companies from the state of Oregon who have donated their products to then display those at the reception. Last year, there were 250 people at the reception. It included international buyers from the Pacific Rim, Canada, Mexico, and Europe. So we're doing really great things. We're facilitating really great contacts for our local Oregon companies at that reception. So what's next? Well, we're going to keep innovating. We're going to do a lot of the same things, only better. We're going to continue with the booth share program. We're looking at ways to make that bigger, to expand it to more than six local companies because let me tell you, there's a lot more that would like to go. The barrier there is really funding. It's expensive, and so finding the right funding to help us along with that is critical. In order to help reach more existing companies here in Oregon that are already at the trade show exhibiting, which by the way, there are about 75 Oregon companies at Expo West, we're going to do some cross-marketing, some sort of signage that brands Oregon and that this is an Oregon company. And then at our booth, we're going to have maps with locating where those companies are and who those companies are and what kind of products they have. So that anybody that comes to the Oregon booth, we can give that flyer to them and explain where they can go to find more great Oregon products. We're developing a trade show app that can highlight the great, high-quality products that are coming out of Oregon and what we have to offer for companies who might be interested in relocating or expanding to Oregon. We're going to continue on with the Oregon reception. And we are definitely going to bolster our recruitment opportunities. I just actually signed the deal this morning where we're partnering with a company that does lead generation. So when you go to a trade show, you're casting a pretty wide net and not getting a lot of real tangible response. And so we want to be very strategic in how we do our recruitment opportunities. So we've hired a company that will provide us with five vetted, qualified leads in the LA Basin with companies. So we'll meet with decision-makers of companies who have won either identified Oregon as a potential place to locate, or maybe they haven't identified Oregon, but now as a result of this process, they are actually wanting to consider Oregon. So now we get the opportunity to be in front of them, talk to them, and tell them why Oregon should be on their shortlist. So I'm going to stop talking now and let you all ask questions of us. This is really what we've been up to over the last five years. And as you all know, I could continue on for quite some time, but I'd rather take some questions from you all.
Thank you very much. Questions?
I've got a couple. Thank you. In reviewing the materials at the city's AIS, and I'm not reading this packet because I haven't had time to go through this, I was just wondering if the city wanted to support regional economic development in the food industry, how best could we, the city, do that to complement what Lane County is currently doing as the lead industry?
You could join us on Team Oregon Food Processing. For one, I think that would be a great opportunity for the city to partner with us in furthering the economic development side of things. I think when I go out and talk to local food processors, and I do that quite often, they tell me the single most important thing that I'm doing for them right now is participating on Team Oregon Food Processing. And so I think it would be a positive step for the city to potentially join that team.
Well, I know that the county does certain economic development, and we do certain economic development, and Springfield does certain economic development, as well as all the other smaller communities. I'm just concerned that all of us collectively aren't doing the same thing and just duplicating our efforts and spinning our wheels when we can combine our efforts together. When we talk about regional economic development, we are talking about regional. And like I've always said, if we can get a company to expand or locate here, you know, my primary concern would be getting it to land in the City of Eugene. But if it means going to Springfield or Junction City or Cresswell or to some other county or some other state, that I think that we, as an organization, the city council should support that effort of Lane County to land that company somewhere here within Lane County because it will definitely help everybody, all the citizens. And then one other question is, how do you see Lane County's regional food strategy fitting in the new regional economic development organization?
Well, personally, I don't think that there's going to be a lot of conflict there. I think there's going to be a lot of collaboration there. It remains to be seen how things are going to play out with the regional ADO at this point, as far as I'm aware. But I think that, you know, certainly, Lane County has taken the lead on the food industry very willingly, but also our partners have been very willing to let us take that lead. So we appreciate that. The institutional knowledge is certainly kind of housed at the county. And so I think that in collaboration with the new organization, I believe it's SWEDCO, I think that, you know, there wouldn't be a lot of change necessarily, but certainly collaboration and knowledge sharing and just moving forward to do true regional economic development, which I think is really the appropriate way to go here.
And I know this evening's discussion has been mostly around the food strategy, but as anybody that attended the economic summit, was it earlier this year or is it?
About a year ago now.
Time flies when you're having fun. But I thought that was a well-done presentation, and I just wish there was some way to not recreate that or do it all over again because there's some really good information that came out of that. But if there's just some way that we could do a presentation of that or a summary of that, I think that would give everybody a real good idea of what exactly is going on in this area as far as the overall picture of economic development.
I've got Alan and Chris in the queue. I'd just like to hook on to what George said because I actually think that's really a good idea, that I think the conversation right now is kind of an in-house conversation. And the Regional Prosperity Summit was great, and the economic development presentation was great, but I think there's a conversation we need to have with the public that we've agreed on these clusters that we're going to try to foster and grow and have really make a difference in the economic future, jobs, and prosperity for our area. I think maybe we need to gather to have a little, you know, presentation opportunity for the broader community and hopefully to generate some education around that. Because I think it's just, people are, as they should be, so worried about where we're going economically that every step we can show that we're making progress, like you've done tonight, I think it will make everybody feel so much stronger and much more willing to keep on moving forward, and they'll feel like we're all in it together. So I think that's a very strong and good message for us to try to figure out some very creative ways to do it. And I happen to know you know some people who know how to do those things, so. Alan?
Yeah, great presentation, you guys. How come I always is that when we get these samples, we never get them from the beverage sector? We always seem to get them from the honey sector. Just a thought.
Apologies.
Just a comment.
Subtle, Alan, subtle.
Kombucha is what you want us to do?
Yeah, kombucha, yeah.
I agree with George. I think this is one of those things that's best done at a regional level. And food sector is one of those clusters that we've identified regionally as one of the things that we want to promote, one of the areas that we want to promote of the few that we are. Can you talk, Sarah, a little bit about the, you had, lack of a better word, a food group that went to Memphis with Greg Evans, and you went, and so maybe you can list who there and kind of things that you learned from that and what you brought back?
Absolutely. So, and Councilor Evans, please jump in here. But yes, there was a group of us from...
A food group?
It was a food group. From the area that went back to Memphis to a Sustainable Cities Conference, I think. I might be saying that wrong. It was a little over a year ago now. And we went there, several of us spoke at the conference, but we really went there to kind of discuss as a group how we can move forward in the food industry generally. And I think that really the takeaway from that was that, you know, the county certainly kind of has the economic development side of things, I would like to say fairly well under control. But there are other, in order to get more of a comprehensive food system moving forward, there's a lot of other things that really need to start occurring. Food security, and that topic is really something that needs to continue and move forward in order for the overall regional food strategy, not just the economic development strategy, but the overall strategy to really be successful. So I think that was certainly my takeaway coming back from that. I don't know if Councilor Evans wants to insert a few more comments there.
I think you pretty much captured it, Sarah. I think the other thing that I would add is that one of the things that was stressed throughout the theme of the conference was having an active food council strategy. And I know that we have a food council and we have a strategy...
A food policy council?
Food Policy Council, yeah. But that it's been dormant for a while, and the idea was to reactivate some of that. And so there was some energy around, you know, having that discussion and kind of bringing that forward with council to kind of jump-start it. That was kind of my intent around that. But, you know, you may want to add to some of the other things that are currently going on around that policy.
Unfortunately, so the Food Policy Council here locally, I'm not very well affiliated with them. They're not affiliated with any sort of government body, and so it's somewhat difficult to determine... I don't even know if they're meeting regularly at this point. And I think the disconnect is that they aren't affiliated with a government body. And so I think that's something that should be considered if the concept and idea of a food policy council is something of interest. I think having that disconnect, there's just no kind of back and forth. And certainly, the county doesn't have a representative. I don't know that the city has a representative on that council, so that makes it a little bit more difficult. And certainly, if it's tied to a government body, there's just more resource for those folks.
Yeah, I think Lynn Fessenden, who went with us, kind of has the repository of that, you know, particular entity and that initiative. And I think that one of the things that I learned from that is that other places like Boston, St. Louis, Puget Sound, whatever they call themselves, in Albuquerque, New Mexico, had a coordinated, aligned strategy that included an overall food policy concept that, you know, fit into what they were doing in terms of their economic development, food security, and all of those initiatives kind of all kind of dovetailing into each other. So I think that that is, or that was kind of the concept for us to kind of pull that document off the shelf, if you will, and for somebody to, you know, either take ownership of it or begin to reinvigorate that policy so that we could start moving that forward, hopefully in alignment with what Lane County is doing currently.
Yeah, you guys came and gave that presentation in Sustainability Commission that year ago when you first came up with this. And it was really interesting. Greg and I huddled about that and what to do next, and you guys actually huddled and said, you know, what we needed to do was reinvigorate this food policy council-type idea, create strategies, do a gap analysis of what we aren't doing. Because we are doing quite a bit, but there's more to do, and kind of figure that all out. So that's... And then from a city and a county and a regional perspective, what should we be doing more than what we're already doing? And so that was the intent between the motion, which is why we're actually here, talking about this, that Greg and I put forward, which was to actually, you know, first of all, compile a list of everything that we're already doing. And Lane County's doing a lot, but it's not everything. There's a lot more going on as well. And then building off all that work, look at, do that gap analysis, figure out what else we needed to do, and then come up with, and look at all the different aspects of the food sector. But then also make recommendations that focused on enhancing the economic development aspects and job creation opportunities in the food sector, improving the environment and increasing the equity, so the triple bottom line aspect of it. And then doing that by, and we were talking about... And then doing that by, and we were talking about taking the bull by the horns and proposing a regional task force, which included Lane County and the city, and the city of Springfield, but also the nonprofits and NGOs that were working in this. Nedco, Willamette Farm and Food Coalition, Lane Food Council, Eugene Farmers Market, Sustainability Commission, Food for Lane County, and, you know, get a group of these people to move all that stuff forward. And that was kind of the essence of the motion that Greg and I put forward, that we tabled for further discussion. It's kind of coming back to that. I still think that's a really good idea. I think having a regional group that focuses on this discussion, it's something that the next thing that needs to occur.
I've got Chris, and Mike, and Claire, and Greg in the queue. And the only, I just want to make a comment about what you just said, Alan. My thought is always when some group has worked hard on being a policy group, it probably makes more sense for us to go to them and ask what they need and how they're viewing it before we try to tell them what we think they should be doing. So I think there is that kind of groundwork that needs to occur before we figure out what our contribution to that would be, because it's just kind of respectful of all the work that's gone before, and all the people who've been engaged in so many ways over time, so trying to do that in a way that is very knowledgeable about what they are already doing, and then brings it up more current, which is what you were, and puts some more energy into it.
It was actually the same kind of group that we put into the motion. It's the same, the Food Policy Group.
But I think, my personal feeling is there's a difference between when we say we think that's our idea, and when we go and talk to them, that have already been working on it and try to figure out how that can best move forward together, so people don't get their toes stepped on in the process. Just my suggestion. Chris, you're up.
Thank you. Those of us that have been kind of in and out of the economic development world for the past thirty-some-odd years, I think I really, at least for me, am impressed with how our economic development strategies have evolved and improved over the time. I can remember when we thought it was all in recruitment, or we thought it was all in expensive ads, or we all thought it was, you know, sales trips. And I think there's still a place for those. But we've really understood now how to use that much more effectively, and particularly around the idea of targeting industries. And so as we've evolved and gotten better, I think sometimes you see the same thing with a better approach to it, sometimes you see new ideas that are very creative. But I think there's some basic core themes that all over those thirty-plus years have always consistently been there, and we've not lost sight of them, and I think that's been important. And the first one for me is that it's really, at the end, all about jobs. This is about employment and finding jobs for people who live in a local area, and not just any jobs, but jobs that are high-quality jobs, and jobs that have good benefits, good paychecks, that are good to do. And by and large, it's not a hard and fast rule, but by and large, these are traded-sector jobs. That's where these jobs come from. And in order to have those kinds of high-quality jobs, you do have to look at traded-sector kinds of jobs to do that, whether they're grown locally or whether they're brought in, that is where they come from. And that then leads to, I think, an important element as well, which is you do have to have a traded sector that involves money coming into the area. I know that some folks think we could operate kind of like a perpetual motion machine, where if I give a dollar to Greg, and Greg gives it to Betty, and Betty gives it to George, and we just move that same dollar around, that somehow we can have a self-sustaining economy. But there's an economic friction that wears pennies off of that dollar, so by the time it gets around to George, there's only seventy-some-odd cents left. And so we have to bring money in in order to keep that dollar whole and keep it going. And that's also where the traded sector, I think, is important. We have to recognize, we can't be a perpetual motion machine. Dollars have to flow in, and services have to flow out. And another one is, we have to find the right balance between being active in our economic development efforts and then being passive. It's not one or the other, it's the right combination of both. And recognizing that that is something that we have to be patient and look to the experts to know what is that best balance. And we learned a lot in the last thirty years about which balance works. And then I think perhaps the final and most important point is, we can't do it alone. It cannot be done by any one group alone. It works best, it works most effectively, and it works most consistently when it's done in partnership, in cooperation. And that goes all the way back to the Lane Economic Forum, all the way to today. Every time you try to go off and do it on your own, you can accomplish just so much, but you can accomplish so much more when you do it together. And that's why I gratefully acknowledge and encourage us to find ways where we can work more effectively with our partners. So congratulations. I really like what we're doing.
Linda, did you have something you wanted to say?
Mayor, I just wanted to comment on what you said, that, you know, sometimes it's really important to go out and find out what these groups or entities or businesses would like to hear from us, what they need from us. And that was one of the things that we identified when we did our food summit. I think a lot of you might have been there, was that the question we asked was, government is here, do you want our help? And if you want our help, how? Instead of going to them and saying, well, this is what we think you should do, because really, we're not in that business and we don't know, we want to hear from them. So I just wanted to comment on what your statement was.
So I have Mike, and Claire, and Greg, and George Brown.
Thank you, Mayor, to take off on what the mayor's comments were here. First of all, I want to say, Sarah and Glenn, thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciated that. I could listen to that for quite a bit longer. I know there's so much more to talk about. In extending the mayor's comments, we have a lot of things that we talk about doing as a city here, there are efforts at the county level in Springfield, there are regional efforts that take place. And I, for one, think that we could do better knowing the place that we fit into the regional whole better. Now, I know you work very well with staff, and I know you work well with many at the table. But there are different kinds of things I think we could be doing that perhaps if we, if we as a council were presented with information like you did today, and specifically in issues around regulatory relief and infrastructure, occur to me. We are doing the Envision Eugene process because we have a mandate for establishing our UGB, but also part of this, when we're looking at bringing on industrial land, is we know that if somebody wants to build a facility on a hundred acres, they can't really do it in Eugene there. They have to go someplace else in our county to do that. And so one of the pieces for us to do an appropriate job with Envision Eugene is to bring some of those large parcels online that we can then offer as an opportunity. So in kind of that spirit, around the issues of infrastructure and regulatory reform, what would you recommend that the City of Eugene look at that would help us be a better player in the larger picture if we would address in the way of regulatory reform or infrastructure? What do we need that we're missing to be a better partner? And I'm not going to put you on the spot to answer all of that right now, but if you have a chance to later, I'd really be interested in knowing the answers to those questions.
Okay, we'll do it later, then.
I would also, from a broad, you know, kind of a thirty-thousand-foot sort of level, I'd love to hear your response, because when that's presented to all of us, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but when that's presented to all of us at the table, it helps us talk about it more effectively, I think.
Claire?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and for the super work. It's very exciting to see what you guys have done and dug into, and how you've helped promote our local food-based industries here. I think it's great, and I'm really excited to see what we do in 2015. Earlier this evening, the mayor was talking about our local truffle festival. And so I think within the scope of some larger industries, there might be some really specialty markets in there, can leverage some good dollars in terms of their value on the market. And so I'd love to make sure that we're thinking about those more niche markets in there as well, and how we can promote them. And then I just wanted to mention, and Greg might mention this as well, that we've, Greg has initiated this Bethel Economic Development Task Force, and Sarah's given us some information there, and we're looking specifically at how we might promote or support traded-sector food industry development in the Bethel area, and that speaks to also the question that Mike just asked. So that's on the radar. And then I have a little bit of knowledge about our local Food Policy Council. It is, someone has, holds the nonprofit 501(c)(3) for that, but it's pretty dormant, and it is really volunteer-led, and they don't really have the capacity to bring it up to a more robust level. So while definitely we want to be sensitive to the work that others have done out there, I think this is actually an instance where we might be very welcomed to take on or work with, or even subsume and subway in the future, that local Food Policy Council, and bring it into a private-public partnership realm. I think that would probably be a really positive step, both for the folks who've been carrying that along for many years, and for our own regional work. And I personally would be very supportive of a county-based Food Policy Council that we could all participate in. I think that would be the smart way to go. And just from the little bit of time I've worked with Sarah, she is very connected with what's going on locally and industry-wide, and in the nonprofit sector. So I think Sarah is someone we can rely on to help us make sure that we're navigating that sensitively and not stepping on anyone's toes or pretending that we've got all the answers and no one else has done this before us. You mentioned the State Department of Agriculture being involved in Team Oregon. Do we also have some connection with federal USDA, because they also play a big role in how we do our food manufacturing?
Right, that's a great question. We don't currently, you know, I know Vicky Walker is aware of what we're doing, and, you know, to be perfectly honest, as we develop and start to expand our 2015 initiative, that might be a really great partner for us to seek out in terms of some more support, because I think, I know Vicky Walker was very supportive the last time I talked to her about this, and very interested in seeing it move forward. So that is a great partnership.
Yeah, because in terms of regulation, you know, they've got the big foot, and they could really either help us or hinder us in terms of how we want to work this. And my last question is a question for the city manager, which is, what kind of action would be required on our part to officially join Team Oregon if we wanted to do that?
First of all, I'd need to find out more about what Team Oregon is, and then, I don't know if we would take official action on the council's part or not. I just, I don't know what the level of involvement would mean. Is it a financial commitment? What's the appropriate level of staff versus elected officials? So we'd be happy to find that out, though.
Well, seeing who else is on the list now, and considering our very robust and awesome local food sector, I would like us to look into that further.
Okay.
Greg?
Thanks, Mayor. So, I'm going to ask a $64,000 question. So how, in your view, is Eugene best positioned in your movie? I mean, you're Humphrey Bogart, and we Claude Rains, are we, you know, are we like Hitchcock? We're just walking through? I mean, what are we? What's that?
You know how to whistle, don't you, Greg?
Look, I like old movies, okay? So anyway, but anyway, I mean, you know, in terms of where are we?
I don't know who you're talking about.
Where are we? How are we best positioned? Where should we be in terms of the grand scheme of things? Where do you see Eugene's role is in terms of the overall strategic position that you're, you know, laying out?
Well, I think Eugene's already been, they've already played, you all have already played a significant role in that. You've been a tremendous partner, both in terms of staff time, financial commitment to, you know, a number of foundational studies that we've been able to do, to just get a grasp on what is here and where we should be going with it. So I would just ask that that continue, and if we can expand on that in any way, as, you know, as we discussed in Memphis, what is the regional food system? What is that, and how do we better that for our citizens? City of Eugene has an integral role to play in that discussion. And so I would just ask that, you know, you continue to do what you are doing, and if there is any way to bolster that collaboration, I think that the county would be very open to that.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. In our city packet, we have a copy of the local, Lane County Local Food Market Analysis, and you also included a copy in here. And I see that this was prepared in 2010 in September. I've got a couple of questions about this. There's page, it's page six of the executive, this is the executive summary. There's a much more detailed presentation online. I looked that over a little bit. Anyway, here it says, "Proposed Implementation Strategies." And there's a couple of things I, have any of these been done?
Certainly, some of them have. I don't know that I'd say that any have been completed. Actually, I can say that some of them have been completed. But certainly, both the county and the city have addressed, at least in part, a number of these. And I can go through the list, but, you know, no one jurisdiction has created a local food coordinator position. But I would argue that the resource that the county has put in, certainly for my staff time and the development of the strategy that we have, I would argue that there has been some work on that. Food distributor logistics and capacity, help distributors market local food, both of those have been discussed and addressed, at least in part.
Oh, yeah, like the people at the trade show?
Yes, but...
The expo.
But certainly, yes. And then also the Regional Food Consortium and their efforts to help brand and market the local industry, to help the local processors more easily get to market.
Is that included, is a deeper discussion of that included in the?
No, you know, it would be interesting to have a deeper discussion on that. But that is an ongoing process, and it's a slow process.
Okay.
But it's really being, Willamette Farm and Food Coalition has really taken the lead on that.
Right, yeah.
And so, and I think that's an appropriate organization to take the lead on that.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, there's, I've got a couple of questions. Gap three, "Methods to Mitigate Risk," it says, "Develop, quote, 'proof of concept,' unquote, through the E-Web demonstration farm."
Yes, so that actually has been done. So the Bergren Demonstration Farm that E-Web purchased up the McKenzie, about the time that this was completed, that has been purchased and is in operation. They work daily up there to really look at and further develop organic farming techniques and opportunities, so that, certainly, this was an E-Web project. So their concern is impacts on the watershed, and making sure that our watershed remains as pristine as it is, and doesn't have adverse effects from agriculture. And so they're constantly working on those sorts of topics and developing, if you will, that proof of concept.
Okay, do they have more information on there?
Yeah, I believe there's a lot of information online.
There about the proof of concept farm? Okay. And then the last, well, maybe the last thing, let's see. It says, "Gap four, Institutional Grocery Store Requirements." It says, "Create a How-to-do Business with Lane County Grocery Stores Manual."
I'm not sure that has ever been done. I know the city was identified as kind of initiating that process, and I'm not sure there's been the capacity at the city to actually do that.
I'm, yeah, I'm wondering if you should even spend any time on that, having worked at a grocery store for forty-four years. And, I mean, you know, the producers are all, they can be if they choose, members of trade organizations who are well-versed in all this stuff, and they're not, I mean, I think that, personally, I think that that would probably be a waste of time. I mean...
And perhaps that's why it's not been done.
Like the smaller grocery stores, through the years, have been very supportive of local people, and have always carved out space on their shelf to give the local guys a try, and encouraged in-store demos, and all kinds of things like that. And in fact, you know, big companies like the Springfield Creamery, they did not start off in the big grocery stores. It took years of being in the small, in the co-ops and the neighborhood groceries, and then, wow, finally they got into Safeway. That was a big deal. I remember that distinctly. And then all the other ones, and then they... that distinctly. And then all the other ones. And then they started sending stuff to the Bay Area. And now they airfreight their products all over the western states. I even saw it back in my home state of Kansas. And it's, it's an amazing success story. And, and you know, they did most of it on their own, really, with very little help from, from any governmental, any governmental source. Looks like I'm out of time.
So I just wanted to wrap this up by saying that I don't think we have to think that economic development in the food sector is in any way in opposition to localization of food efforts, that these are things that are important. And that in our climate and energy plan, localization of food, being food security are very important things. And they're important economically as well as important in terms of the quality of life and the food we have available. And so they fit all these kind of goals that we have. And so we need to have a robust food cluster, but at the same time, we need to have a robust food life here that sustains our community and can help us if we come upon times that are more difficult. But also, really for us, I think all over this country, we really take pride in having great quality food in this area for us to consume as well as to sell. And they're both important. And that's why people love our farmers' market so much and love the local produce so much. And it's so important to everything that we do. Sometimes I think we get into conversations where it sounds like we're posing one against the other and it's just not the case. That, it's just an important part of who we are as Lane County and who we are as Eugene, Oregon. So thank you all very much for being here.
So just so you know, what you're going to take home and eat, what you have in front of you is Glory Bee's Pacific Northwest Blackberry Honey. It was, yes, it's delicious. And so Glory Bee and Lane County have entered into a partnership where we are co-branding their samples and we like to give them out whenever we can. So please enjoy.
And they won our Bold Steps Award.
They did.
Local honey's helping.
Thank you.